Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting at Stark County Commission. Today is Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is nine o'clock. We'll start with the question.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start by ratifying the agenda. Any comments, additions, or deletions?
Well, it's a special meeting, so you can't do any.
No, it's not.
It's not.
It was scheduled, yep, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, we have an equipment purchase at the weed board. Anyway, I'd like that to be on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. Anything else? I would like to add code review conversation on our livestock building. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Agenda is ratified. First item on our agenda is the twenty twenty-four budget adjustments. Auditor Karen Richard.
Okay, so you will see your big sheet. Okay, these are our accounts.
Thank you for making it a big sheet.
I tried to do what I came. Um, so for motions and approvals, and then if you have any questions, um, our largest one is going to be for road. We would just need to transfer over balances so that we're starting with one road account. So you'll see, the first motion I would need from the commission would be to transfer over the three ninety-seven eighty-five from farm-to-market road, the four hundred and fifty-five thousand eight eighty-nine from unorganized road and bridge, and the six million fifty-nine thousand three seventy-eight seventy-eight from county road and bridge, all to our new county road fund that was highway tax for a combined total of six million five hundred and fifteen thousand six sixty-five sixty-three.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make the motion that Karen suggested.
Okay, we have a motion to make the adjustments as recommended by the auditor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner White. Roll call vote. Oh, excuse me.
So now when we transfer these, I mean, is it going to make a difference on bookkeeping and keeping track of? Because now everything is sort of itemized into these own departments and and is it going to be just as easy to find the information we're looking at when it's all lumped into one?
Yes, so in twenty twenty-four, when we were making the twenty twenty-five budget, we still have the individual lines for revenue that come into unorganized road and bridge and the highway tax distribution. We're just moving them all over into one fund. Yep.
But I mean, as far as finding different expenses and stuff like that?
I think it'll be easier.
Okay.
Be honest with you.
So you'll just have like, um.
One set of books.
One, yes, you will have one fund, that one budget, but you will have, you can pick it apart as far as where that money came from. If you wanted to, it's just listed on those lines. And so then you'll have a, that'll be the starting balance going into twenty twenty-five for that fund will be the eight million five twelve nine nineteen oh three, which is the combined of everything together.
But before that, that money was sort of specified for certain projects or expenses, no, it's?
Not, um, you mean, so it comes in under county road, but with the century code as it is, you can actually transfer between the different county roads. And we don't have organized townships.
Right, we don't.
And so that's why we're able to put it all into one fund.
And then we'll delete these, these accounts then?
Yes, so that, that's what the, that's what the plan is. We may have some little ones at the end of the year if they wind up in there, but we haven't received anything into it yet, so we should be able to start fresh.
So twenty-one ten, twenty-one twenty, twenty-one fifty-five. Go into twenty-one fifty.
Yes.
Got it. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I forget who made the motion. Commissioner, so we'll do roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, next.
For the next motion I'm asking is to amend our jail capital projects budget by thirty-six thousand nine seventeen sixty-nine for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So that's an increase, Karen, to the original budget of thirty-six thousand, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And it was mainly from the board of prisoners expense line being more than we thought.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to amend the jail capital projects budget by thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents, amending it to a total of two million four hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Franchuk. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Clarice?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next item.
Okay, so we will have a general fund transfer. One is for forty-seven thousand five hundred to the weed control, and the other one is ten thousand to Stark County victim witness. Those were budgeted transfers in, for twenty twenty-four, and we would like to move the funds over from the general fund to those applicable funds.
Okay, questions, comments?
Can we make a motion for both these transfers? Because they're coming from the general fund at the same time?
I would just suggest doing one altogether.
Just do one at a time.
Or, or you can do from the general fund to the weed for forty-seven five hundred and from the general fund to the Stark County victim.
I'll make a, a motion from the general fund to the weed for forty-five thou, or forty-seven thousand five hundred and a motion for, from the general fund to the Stark County victims of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Commissioner Clarice? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. That concludes our budget adjustments. Sure, go ahead.
So on page two, I know it's not as big, but we have the general fund twenty twenty-four expense breakdown. If you see the approved, what was actually spent, and then over/under amounts by department. The one, I think that there's a couple that kind of stick out a little bit. One is going to be custodian line because previously, um, half of Andy's salary was going against the social services. We had to switch that around in twenty twenty-four, so it's going, it had to go against Mike's budget. And then the other one that would probably stick out would be the courthouse maintenance because the state requires us now to combine all the maintenance. And so when we move that same stuff around with the social services for the salary, we had to move that around with the maintenance as well. And so, yes, some of them are increased, but then you'll see where they came off. It didn't really cost us anything, it was just moving the funds. And so the last one that had a significant, there was no other one that had like a significant overage or anything like that. We already, except seeing the general fund there. You'll see for under amount, your non-departmental expenses will probably always have your largest under amount. That's actually half of the amount that we were under for twenty twenty-four because that's, non-department expenses is going to include your benefits, your insurance, your, um, a lot of costs that are very variable. Transports, it has the sheriff's transports in there. Costs that are kind of, we don't really know until it happens. So you will probably always be, have a buffer in there.
Right, so unless you had a hundred percent personnel occupied a hundred percent of the time, you're going to probably have an, a, a lower adjustment on that one, okay?
Yes, so I was just looking to see if the commission had any questions about any of them in specific, or?
Any questions, comments, concerns? This would not have to be an action item if I?
No, this is just supplementary information, so you see where everybody's at.
So, are we good? If not, we will move on? If they're, if they're over on their budget, we don't have to prove anything on there?
Um, no, because you have your overall, it's all combined into the general fund. I just want you to be able to see the breakdown, is that, is that what you mean?
Right, if they went over their budget on it.
If they went over, but they're included, they're not, the overall fund is not over. We were under by eight hundred and something, so.
Thank you.
There was three of them on that list that there was no adjustment to, that was good.
Yeah, because they're milled out.
Yeah.
So, all right. Okay, um, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda would be a COVID funds reconciliation report. Karen?
Okay, so I had a little bit of a computer problem and I had completed all of our COVID funds reconciliations on Friday and did not save it, and my computer restarted, and I had to start over. So, this is what I have for you today, is the ARPA portion. I don't need a motion, I just wanted the commission to have a breakdown and I wanted you to be aware that we are going to be sending the remaining one eighty-five, eight thirty-four, sixty-nine to the City of Dickinson ambulance, which is what was originally discussed before. And they are going to take that dollar amount and kind of put it towards what we are going to be owing later on.
That we've committed to.
And it could, that we've already committed to. So it's going to completely zero out ARPA, and then ARPA will be tracked, accounted for, and I will finish up my reporting, and there is nothing left as far as the ARPA goes.
ARPA is done from the, that's just a done, done deal?
Yep, that, well, that's the end of the.
Right.
This tracking, yes. Yes, we will, we will be done, it's all been expensed, accounted for, so no more using any ARPA money. Coming soon, I will be asking the commission for another adjustment because I would like to get the rest of leftover CARES funding or anything that's left in there cleaned up and only leave the hundred thousand tribal, like that tribal grant that I had applied for that we got for a hundred thousand that department heads can apply for. I would like to just have that fund zeroed out except for that in there, and then we would take the remaining balance and put it into the general fund, which is what is supposed to happen anyways. So this is just the first step to get half that fund.
Just cleaning up our books.
Yes.
And you're, and that, will that be in February?
I'm hoping for February for the, the rest of it. There's some digging around I have to do because some of the FEMA and the COVID CARES Act funding is a little mixed. So I gotta pick that apart. But this is good for the ARPA and no, no action needed, just that it's being closed out and I will be sending that check to the City of Dickinson for ambulance.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you for that.
Did you actually write a check or do you electronically transfer it?
The City of Dickinson still gets checks.
Good, I'm glad.
We're going to get to that, transferring thing. Yes. For hit miss.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the radio tower lease. Once again, Karen?
Sorry, so we have a lease, and I did not even know about this until Elena started looking for radio tower stuff. And we have only made one payment on this lease. It starts in the first day of January twenty twenty-one, and it's good until the end of twenty twenty-five. So I'm just looking for a motion to go ahead and pay David Bauer, who owns that property where this tower site is. It's a combined twelve hundred dollars. That would cover the twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, and then the twenty-five dollar amount that wasn't paid, which was three hundred a year.
And that would take us to the potential end of the lease, correct?
It would, the lease would need to be renewed at the end of twenty twenty-five, which Elena is aware of, so.
Both parties forgot about this lease?
Elena Decker, Stark County Emergency Manager. I wasn't aware of it, and I think it was fairly new to Dave Bauer too. He'd purchased the land from a previous owner when the lease started. Yeah, we didn't, no one really knew about it. I don't think the previous emergency manager, Sean at Davenport, knew about it either, so. Fun little discovery.
The last time we paid it was in January of twenty-one, and we were just supposed to send a check every single year for three hundred dollars.
Mr. Bauer is the current owner of the property, correct?
Yes, I, I spoke with him and I did confirm that it is something that I think he knew about, but I didn't think he really.
I don't think he was very concerned.
Yeah.
He just kind of forgot about it, and so did we, because we didn't know about it, so.
Okay, looking for a motion to bring the lease current, twelve hundred dollars?
I'll make that motion since I signed the original.
Did you?
And pay the bill?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Franchuk, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clarice, any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, um, City of Taylor, small city infrastructure grant request. Good morning.
Good morning, how is everybody today?
Good.
I'm Lisa, City of Taylor auditor. I filled out, all right, I, I'm sorry, I sent everything via email, all the documents required for the twenty twenty-five grant request for the small infrastructure. And I'm here if you have any questions. We are looking for just the twenty twenty-five payment. If so approved. I do have our, I think he is online, our city engineer, Anthony Sitnis, to answer any technical questions as far as what happened and what we did.
Okay, just a little history, we have approved the small city, um, infrastructure grants. The appropriate next step would be for us to review the application, score it, and then make a recommendation back at the February meeting. And I would open it up for comments, discussions.
Taylor, the first city to do this so far?
Yes.
So exactly what is this project?
Well, in twenty-one, Southwest Water brought in a tower just outside of Taylor, and we wanted to connect to it, we bought into the building of that. And, but our lines were not large enough, so we needed to go and upgrade the lines to accommodate that. And now as of Friday last week, we are hooked up to that tower and no longer, um, reliant on those tanks, the underground tanks.
That's exciting.
Mm-hmm.
You're hooked to the tower?
We are, as of Friday last week.
I did see a message that went out that water was down and.
Yes, and that, that was prior to us hooking up to the tower. The funding, the funder required that we have US parts, so we were waiting on a US valve for the, the pressure. So, and we have a Band-Aid, we have a foreign valve in right now. So when that US valve comes in, we are going to switch that out, but we are now hooked up.
Any other questions?
So do we need to put a committee together to score this, or how do we want to go forward with this?
The motion I'd like to see is to have a small committee, probably you and I, since we've worked on this, to score this, bring it back to the February meeting for if they, you know, if they score appropriately and recommendation as to, I mean, this is why we did this, right? So.
That's right.
Yep, so.
Yeah, we should just, I mean, we put the framework in place, we should use it, and so I think it would be good to, we had a couple of weeks to do this and go forward and.
Now, all your water lines and stuff throughout the whole city, even to your hydrants and stuff are all?
Through, through this project, we did bring back four fire hydrants along, Anthony, are you online? No, second straight, I believe it is. And so we have four now that are functional, whereas we had zero that were functional before this.
That's, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
If we had any questions during the scoring process here, is Anthony, can we, could we contact Anthony?
You may, you bet.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Or me.
Okay, so do we need a motion? I would, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that, that we take this under advisement and, and score this in the coming couple of weeks here and be prepared to show those scores at the, the February regular meeting and make the recommendation then.
Okay.
Oh, I, I would surely volunteer to do that. Mr. Messer, you've worked with me on this whole project too, if you want to join, that'd be great.
Will do. Okay, we have a motion.
I'd second that.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Any other discussion? We know what that dollar amount request is, is it? Okay. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote. Actually, we don't need roll call. So all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, in the, in the, geez, I lost the word. Anyway, to save you guys more time, Richardson is reaching out in the next couple of days also, so a few ways. Maybe don't hear from them, maybe contact Marcie and then, um, taking out of the requests coming to you shortly. They wanted to do something before the February meeting, so.
Okay, so do we want to preemptively appoint that same committee to review the Richardson request?
Or a second?
I'm with me.
Or a second committee to see how we, we, we've, we've put the points together?
Well, you know, and there's nothing wrong with noticing this stuff either, and us sitting around a table, I'm absolutely fine with that. So if, if we want to do that, um, if that's your wish, then we should notice it and sit down and do it.
Sure, I'd do it with either you or Paul, so.
If we notice it, everybody can get involved.
Correct.
Okay, so.
That would be good.
Let's get a motion to that effect. Richardson?
Yeah, I mean, if we, I mean, it'd be nice, I mean, we need to put a deadline on there, but I would make the motion that we review the Richardson application if we can get that in short order here.
You want to put a deadline on it?
What do we got for timing here?
Today's the fourteenth.
By this Friday would be great if they have it together.
Let's give them till the Monday, the twenty-seventh. That gives us, is that?
It's kind of their choice when they turn in their application.
Well, what I'm saying is if it's not in by the twenty-seventh, we're going to move it on down the road. If it's in by the twenty-seventh, we'll review it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'd make that motion when we score the, or look at the Richardson application, giving them a deadline of Monday, January twenty-seventh. And I would, I guess with that motion, we could put notice out and arrange a date for all the commissioners to sit together at a table and score that proj, that project.
Perfect, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, twenty twenty-five commission portfolios and committee assignments. Okay, well, we talked about this at the meeting last week, I believe, and the original comment was that I would reach out to other commissioners and the idea was that whether or not we're going to follow the Association of Counties recommendation not to have dual portfolio holders for department heads. And so evidently, there was conversation that they, that may or may not trigger the quorum rules. It's unfortunate, I mean, we got to be able to do our job. So I'm opening it up for discussion, and I think the first point that I would like to discuss is whether or not we're going to follow that recommendation of single commission member to single department head portfolio assignments, and if not, have the discussion regarding that, so. Anybody?
I have an email from, from them, and they do not recommend the one, one.
Right, they don't recommend one? No.
It says up to the individual commissions, especially if there's some higher, I mean, if you want to read my email.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking of that county commission meeting, what, I don't know what they called it, in. No, last year in March, it was brought up at the county commission conference, and Aaron Burst at that point was recommending that we do not have dual portfolios. I've, I've been very vocal about having potential of multiple ones. I've also been very vocal about trying to keep communication when that happens. I've also been very vocal about trying to keep communication when that happens. The problem is, the communication, I think, is lacking from, including myself, from portfolios holders to the full commission. And if, if we're going to go contrary to what we're talking about doing, then I'm going to want some kind of a communication process set up where we, everybody knows what's, what's going on, so.
Anyway, you know, getting back to it, I mean, you can read it too, but I don't want to do it now, but I don't know, is there any problems with, between the department heads and the, that have dual commission portfolio holders and?
The, the problem is, is if, so Dean and I have the sheriff, right? So if the, if the sheriff or Dean and I discuss a particular item, and then it comes back and any discussion happens with anybody else, that triggers quorum, okay? Whereas if, you know, it's a single portfolio holder, you can have other discussion without triggering that, potentially triggering that. That's the item. And as sensitive as people are nowadays to quorums, I, I think that's part of the thought process at that point.
And that could, that could happen either whether they have.
Single or dual?
Single or dual, I mean, if it's your portfolio and Commissioner Claris goes and talks, has a conversation, I have a side conversation, that the same thing could happen. I don't know, I guess we can ask, I'd like to ask some feedback from the Sheriff's Department and the Road Department if they have any benefits of having two commissioners assigned to them, or one? And what the benefit, and whether it matters or not to them.
Well, there's actually so, there's actually several others, other than the road and the sheriff. So I'm certainly open to.
I guess one comment.
And they're here right now.
One comment I would have is like, I, I think it's important, if we can, to try to keep the, the chairman of the board informed of things as they come about. And it's difficult to do that if you have dual portfolio. Because the minute that you make that call to the chairman, if you have something to give them, him or her, the heads up of what's going on in a particular portfolio, you basically violated the open, or the quorum rules.
I would have to agree, that being chair for the last few years, you know, there was a lot of things with the dual ones that I wasn't aware of still. I actually found out in other ways.
Fairly.
Does it make sense, and I'll, I'll start because I'm the one who started this years ago because I wanted to, and I think it's very beneficial to do that. But if that's the road you guys are going down, and the, the departments that want to, then maybe the chairman should be one of those two on those departments. If that's doable, but my two cents, but if you have any other questions.
Yep, Al, go ahead.
You know, I don't really have a preference or not. I know for 18 years plus, I had one, and then a few years ago, we had two because of the large portfolio. So it, you know, it's kind of nice sometimes, I can only get a hold of one guy, get a hold of another person. So I, I guess sometimes it, you know, I, I kind of like that, but get two people's opinions. You know, because we are the largest portfolio, so. And I get where you got to be careful of, of talking to other people along the line, so. I guess that's probably more of a legal thing than.
And you're going to learn that more.
And I'm going to learn that more.
Yep.
So, but anyway, I, like I said, I, I've enjoyed it, you know, working with these two guys. And, and it's nice sometimes, one guy's gone, I get a hold of another guy to make a decision, so. And I guess a guy, so.
Well, I'm a little bit, I mean, I've heard it with my own ears from Aaron Burst on various web, webinars that we've had. He's mentioned it more than once. He mentioned it in, in March at our meeting, our County Commissioners Summit, I think that's what it was. In March, and so I, like I said, I, I tend, if that's the recommendation, he is an attorney, he's well versed in, in, in the law. And I'm like, well, if that's his recommendation, I think that would be appropriate to follow.
Is that recommendation documented though? I mean, or is it just a verbal recommendation?
Oh, it was at the forum, so I don't know if it's documented or not. So did Aaron send you the?
No, Jenny, Jenny did.
Okay.
I mean, I guess if you want to read it before you.
No, I mean, I, I trust what you're reporting is what she said. I'm just saying it's in conflict with Aaron's recommendation has been, so.
And the way I'm interpreting this is it's kind of, it is, it's up to.
To the commissions.
Right.
Especially when there's larger portfolios, that it sometimes works better to have. But she says up to the individual commissions, yeah. But she says as far as, what I understand here, there really is not a yes or no.
Okay, so I'm going to look for a motion to either go with multiple portfolio assignments, or go to the single portfolio assignment. So if anybody has a motion, I would entertain that.
Just before you, I'm just looking at this open, excuse me, North Dakota Open Meetings Guide. And where Aaron Burst is getting this is under the Open Meetings Guide that's put out by, you know, the, the AG. It talks about that portfolios are a committee of the governing body if more than one commissioner holds the portfolio. And that's where he's getting this, this advice to tell you guys to have one. Because if you have this committee, then you're subject to the open meetings.
Can you state that again? Where do you stay as, I'm sorry.
Sure, it says portfolios, portfolios are a committee of the governing body if more than one commissioner holds the portfolio. And that comes directly from the Attorney General Open Meetings Guide. So that's where, that's where Mr. Burst is taking, or Attorney Burst is taking his, taking that from.
So if we do this motion and stuff, are we, you know, we're tying future commissions down to the same argument also?
Well, I think the, the commissions could change their approach to this every time commission portfolios are assigned. If, if you go to one, then you would say, hey, we're taking the recommendation of the Association of Counties. Now, I can tell you that we are trying to get a bill that's going to loosen those restrictions a little bit. The prediction of success is 50/50 at best. But we are trying to work on that. At, at minimum, I think we need to have better communication from the portfolios back to the commission, myself included.
I'm not arguing that point at all. Sure.
Being attending that summit too, that was also the recommendation, I heard too, to go to the one. And I'd make the motion that we go to one commissioner per portfolio.
Okay, we have a motion to go to one commissioner per department. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Claris, we have other discussion.
One last discussion, I, I did pick up on Mr. Heiser saying that if he was unable to, you know, set up with one commissioner, being the largest portfolio, to have a second one be able to attend. I know there's been several instances where either he was doing an interview or meeting with a contractor, where things came up. What can happen if, what should we put in place that if that does happen with those portfolios, that maybe the chair can step up and help it, attend those meetings? When the portfolio holder may not be able to.
I think that's fine, or maybe an alternate would be fine as well.
Okay.
So like, for example, if I wasn't the chair and Dean keeps sheriff, and the sheriff wants something, the alter, if Dean's not available, the alternate is me or whatever, I'd be fine with that. But the motion we have right now is to change to a single portfolio department charge. Do we have any other discussion? Nice. I will start, hearing none, let's vote, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
I pose same sign?
Aye.
We'll go roll call vote, Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Marsh?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, so I think we need, if I look at this correctly, based on the handout we had last week, we have to make some corrections. So under Commissioner Franchuk, the Roosevelt Regional, Roosevelt Custer Regional Council is currently my charge. That would need to come down.
I'll add it over to the new ones I sent out.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so under myself, I would be deleting the sheriff's portfolio. Excuse me, there's one other one, I, I believe it is in our best interest also to, where's your, what you have? Actually. Okay, so. Yeah, under Commissioner Marsh, we have add the Dickinson Library Board. I believe it's in our best interest as well to, under Commissioner Franchuk, is to split the personnel and HR.
I think personnel should stay with the chair.
Okay, so we're going to move that one down, I'm fine with that. Anybody else want to chime in on that?
Yeah, how does finance work? Because it used to be one commissioner, now there's five of us on there.
I think conversations with the auditor are absolutely essential by all five, five commissioners.
So.
I, I, you know, we really, I mean.
Okay, that's already going against what we just voted for.
But I don't think having a conversation with the auditor, or a conversation with myself, is the same as being their portfolio.
No, that's totally different. I agree with you. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
At the finance, the finance portion was I send all of you financial information. So I would probably just leave all of it on finance. The one that does have two that you're thinking of is my actual auditor portfolio. Is that what you're?
No, because we're all just in on the finance.
Yeah, because I have to send the financials to all of you. So I.
I just thought it sort of changed that. When we came on.
I mean, yeah.
Because there was one person in charge of finance at that time, it caused a lot of controversy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think all five of us have to be involved in that process.
But you all have the final say in the overall finances, so.
I know, but at that time, one person was making all the recommendations and making the decisions. And it was just, yes, 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 and that's the way it went.
Yeah, so are you okay with leaving it all five?
I'm okay with that.
That's my recommendation, and then we'll see. We'll see if we get some legislation that would address that, that would flex that. And if not, again, let's not be afraid to notice conversations, notice meetings. I mean, I use the example on the facility out at the fairgrounds we're talking about. Talk over here, talk about here, nobody talks to each other. Then we said, well, let's have a meeting. We had three commissioners present at that meeting. Walk out the meeting, and the comment is made, that's the best meeting we had regarding that facility or conversation that we've ever had in the last three years. So I think we get more done, we're just paranoid about noticing meetings. And we shouldn't be, if we have something, err on the side of caution, notice it. Okay. Okay, so we're going to move personnel into the chair. Okay, so the next one on the list that is duplicate is Commissioner Marsh has a duplicate with emergency management and road, emergency management with Commissioner Claris, and road with Commissioner White.
Commissioner Claris wants a 911 emergency, I'll just leave it all in his hands.
And I'd want input Commissioner White on, on road. I, I think I saw one in here that I thought Commissioner Marsh, Marsh would be good on. And trying to keep these balanced.
Remember, there's one more under my name with the library, so.
Yep. I also.
Watch that, watch that balance.
I, I also think that you would be very appropriate for, again, that the portfolios are signed potentially at Commissioner discretion, but I also want input and consensus. But I think Commissioner Marsh would be good on the Rough Rider North Social Service Board. Again, that's open, but yeah, so we have the duplication, would it be okay that we keep Commissioner White on the road department?
I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Okay.
It's going to break my heart, but it'll be fine.
Okay, and then.
You guys don't realize how many crock pot meals I have at the county shop.
Yeah. Okay. So the, the last one is emergency management 911. Well, IT, is IT a portfolio, or is that a board, or a committee? Is it a committee? Is it a portfolio? I don't know.
I think it was, I mean, when we started it, when we first got on the board four years ago, we started it as a portfolio.
Okay.
I thought we did, anyway.
You have IT, that still has a duplicate, and then you have auditor, that still has a duplicate.
Okay. Okay, since we agree on finance, the chair will take the auditor with Commissioner Franchuk's blessing. The.
Mine's getting shorter, like.
And I'd also like to see if anybody would like to take the Vision West.
You know what, I can do that one, it's part of, it's a sister to Roosevelt Custer.
Okay.
They don't have much, they have two meetings a year.
Yeah.
So whether I was in this position or not, with Vision West is fine. Because a lot of the ones I have are pretty low maintenance. Now that I got rid of the sheriff. So I'd ask for input from Commissioner Marsh, Commissioner Claris on emergency management.
Like I just mentioned earlier, I would, if Paul wants it, I'd definitely leave it in his hands, he's
Okay.
pretty sharp with it.
Okay, appreciate that.
Okay. And then the Housing Authority Board, I see, we have two. But that's a board, that's not a portfolio, so both Commissioner White and Commissioner Marsh can sit on that.
In the effort to balance, would you take my Rough Rider North?
What do they do? I don't even know.
I'd be interested in that if you wanted.
Oh, okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I had moved that to Commissioner Marsh, we'll move that to Commissioner Franchuk. Okay, are we done with those? Oh, we have IT left, IT. I would ask for input from Commissioner Claris and Commissioner White.
I, I've enjoyed it, so I don't mind keeping it.
I agree, I mean, it's, I think we've come a long ways there, there's been a lot of effort put into that whole idea there.
You were talking about personnel, but HR and personnel kind of go hand in hand, do you want?
But I think there's opportunities or incidences where maybe they should be segregated.
I think it could cause a conflict of interest at times.
Yeah. So if you, I mean, if, I mean, are, are you okay keeping it? If not, maybe somebody else would take it?
I, I don't mind taking it.
What's your thoughts, Commissioner Franchuk, Dean?
Somebody else wants to which, that's fine.
Okay, Corey has some HR background, so we'll move that one over to him.
Would those added duties, would it be okay if I kept IT, Corey? Yeah.
Has HR. Well, he had tough. He had a tough last couple, three years here, so.
He's earned a break.
Okay, so IT, any questions, concerns? If not, I'm going to assign that one to Commissioner Claris now that Corey's got HR. Do you have all this?
I hope so.
All right. Okay.
Start jobs, develop, there's two on that, but that's a board and two that's.
JDA is a board, yeah, Bernie and I are on that one, in fact, we meet today at noon.
Today at noon, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
You don't want to gift Dean with some of yours?
I'm, I'm good where I'm at.
I'm, I'm good.
He doesn't get, maybe he wants to Billings and Browns this year.
So, all right, okay, portfolio assignments are done. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, County Road Superintendent Retirement Discussion.
I would just, just to back up Chairman, if Dean's gonna take the Rough Rider Human Service Board, I think we need to have a motion from this Board appointing him to take that role.
Oh, okay, you wanna make that motion?
I'd make that motion to appoint Dean Franchuk as the Representative of Stark County for the Rough Rider North Human, Rough Rider North's own Social Service Board.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Add second.
Second by Commissioner White, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay.
I think, I think we've made a good rounding out, I will say that I did enjoy my last four years on the Road Department with following a Road Superintendent, Mr. Heiser around, and I've learned a lot working with him, so.
Well, on, on those two, I call the two big ones, Road and Sheriff, I think we all need to be cognizant, aware of what's going on, so when you get a phone call of something, you can answer that question, so I would ask that the portfolio holders figure out a way to do it, the conversation I had is each portfolio should make a quarterly report, even if it's one sentence, one paragraph, so that people are aware of what's going on.
Hold on, what did, what'd you say on Sheriff?
Commissioner Franchuk has it. Okay, any other, if not, we'll move on to the Road Superintendent Discussion.
Well, good morning, everyone, I know we had a kind of a brief discussion last meeting about my retirement, but I have an official retirement date of March twentieth, and, you know, after twenty-one years, you know, I've seen lots of changes, you know, like if I sit back and look at some of the, I call it, some of our good, great accomplishments is, you know, putting new pavement on from Morton County to Billings County, you know, we actually paved some of the subdivisions with, without having to, a special assess, I think was pretty good, but with that being said, you know, with some of the surge funding we got from the state, you know, none of that would have been possible. So there's, there's lots of good things that we've done, I think, over the years, I think one of the biggest challenges that this Board's gonna be faced with is someday when Enchanted Highway needs to be redone, and it's gonna come up someday, you know, we're, we're, it's actually pretty fair shape now. I believe back in two thousand and six, we put a two-inch overlay on it, now that highway's as high as it can go. We can't come any higher, we're gonna get too narrow lanes, or lanes are pretty narrow, so it'll probably have to be milled and filled, so one thing about talk to your legislature to see, because it's gonna be quite, you know, it's eighteen miles, that's gonna take quite a pile of cash to, to do that, and it's not a matter of if, it's just when, we might have to do something, because that's back, I don't know how many years ago, so it's only had one overlay on it since it's been put in there, since when Wald, I think, was.
Well, it's held up very well, number one, number two, as you're probably aware, there is legislation in the DOT, DOT budget to take over some of these roads, whether or not this one would slide in there, I don't know, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would, I would keep beating the drum, because like I said, that's gonna be, I'd venture to say probably a twenty-some-plus million project. I mean, for this, for the county.
Are you talking about just Stark County, sure, are you talking about?
Well, I mean, that's what it'll probably cost for the project, so somehow, along the way, something, you just keep figuring out how it's gonna do it, because it, someday it'll have to be redone.
What's the total mileage on that road?
About eighteen miles.
Eighteen miles. Of ours.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, we actually did a, a micro-surfacing on it because we had so many thumping cracks a number of years ago, so that kind of took out some of that pounding, so which kind of helped, you know, protect it a little bit, so, but, other than that, I'm not gonna sit up here and talk about everything we've done in the last twenty-one years, but I guess the next biggest question is how do we move forward with my position, however, this Board wants to do it, that's, I think, what the biggest discussion needs to be, how we're gonna move forward.
So. Well, thank you for that, I, I think another good accomplishment is the state of the equipment.
Right.
Even the four years that I've been here, we have made leaps and bounds, I know it's leaps and bounds. I know in one eye that's spending a bunch of money, and the other eye, you know, is, as you do in the farming business, if you don't have good equipment, you're gonna have good results, so that's the thing that I see, and I think we're in really good shape, where we can kind of monitor that and kind of watch that, where we don't have to do that kind of spending in the future, so, we're in good shape.
One other thing I forgot to say, honked my horn on the bypass going on the east side of Dickinson, that's, well, that's, that's a great road, and I really enjoy driving it, so. Anyway, so, however, you guys, it, it's balls in your court now, whichever you wanna do it, I'll, I'll be here to help transition, however, however I can help, so.
Okay, thoughts, comments?
Well, we got two months, so I think we should start working with HR and, and.
But two months is gonna go by pretty quick.
It does.
I think Joetta's been, I know, kind of along the way, she's been actually reaching out to some of the counties and actually getting job descriptions for, and I think that needs to get compiled and put together. One, one other thing, when we get to that point, I, I think we should have kind of a committee to, you know, review the advocates, and I've got some ideas of different people, like, you know, from other Road Departments throughout the county, Morton County. You know, different people, but I think we should have some type of a committee, so get some of the outs, you know, people that.
Who are some of the guys that you've worked with over your years from other counties that?
Well, I was, I was thinking like Jeff Iverson, you know, Jeff Iverson was the County Road Superintendent in Billings County for many years, he worked for contractors for a lot of years, and now he's the Mayor of Bellfield, and John Saki, he's the Morton County Engineer, you know, he's a, he's a guy to the, and we work with them, he's just some of the neighboring counties, and, and maybe a couple, you know, the portfolio Commissioner, and maybe somebody else, Chairman or somebody, but I think it's a pretty important position to fill, you know, it's our largest department. And, you know, we got people internally right now that got the talents, but that's a decision you guys have to make how you wanna proceed, and whatever you guys proceed with, I'll support it.
Whatever we decide, I think we have to take the road to get the best person.
Yeah, I agree.
So, a question I have for you, in your current new position, is your portfolio, the Road Department?
Yeah, it is.
Are you taking any guys with you?
Depends. No poaching, okay.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I just, I guess, I think there needs to be some, you know, conversation about how we move forward, is it gonna be strictly an internal search? Are we gonna search outside the organization, what those qualifications are gonna be, you know, I think you're working with Joetta on a job description currently.
Yeah, I believe she was, been searching for a while, since I kind of thought about retiring, so.
So, I know this, I mean, this is our biggest portfolio, and it's important, obviously, the, the safety of our citizens relies on how good our Road Department is, and we're in really good shape right now. And, I mean, your original background, are you, are you a civil tech, is that what I understand?
No, I've been building roads, I started my career building roads in back in nineteen seventy-eight, and I, and it's, I think, two thousand and twenty-five, since the last time I looked. I worked for American Contract and Candy Construction, I worked for KLJ for like four years.
But as a civil tech?
No, just as a, not a, just a.
Okay.
Boots on the ground.
Okay.
And then with the county the last twenty-one years.
You don't, you don't have diploma?
Nope, I got dirt under my fingernails to prove it.
Right.
Which, yeah, which is great, I mean, so I wonder, I know that some of our neighboring counties, you had mentioned Morton County, they've gone down the path of a PE.
They do, but that, one thing I'm gonna say about that, you can get a county engineer, but then if you're gonna do all the work that he does, you're gonna need a survey crew also.
I think it's more about a review, and, you know, one of your biggest jobs is managing vendors, right?
Well, part of it, yeah.
I mean, I would say, I mean, and you've managed, you know, from, and, and equipment purchases and all that stuff, that's, you know, all the part of it, you know, and I just wonder, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, I've, I've reached out to some folks locally and having conversations about this, and I wonder if, you know, that makes some sense, I don't know if we wanna go down that road to actually, you know, look for that type of individual with the PE, or at least the ability to achieve one in a year's time, I mean, more importantly, you know, not public works experience, but private experience, and if those guys are out there, don't know, but I mean, I think we're pretty darn competitive as far as pay goes, I, I would think that we could maybe possibly garner some interest from someone like that, but I, that's just, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Here's, here's my comment, I agree, best person available, I think you've got really good personnel out there, and hopefully we would get some internal interest, I think the job description should be defined internally, we know what we want, I mean, yeah, it's good to have this outside bouncing information, but I think internally we should decide what the job description is, I think internally we should decide what the offered wage is. With twenty years of experience, there's a lot of value there, and, and as good as we do inside the county, I've always said L's one of the biggest, L's biggest assets is his connections, especially within the DOT. That's worth something, and the next individual, whoever that is, is gonna have to work on that. But the other discussion should be, are we gonna continue on the same path with what, how we function as a Road Department, or do you look at what thing, I think that should be discussed, I also think the, since it is the biggest department, I think the entire Commission in some fashion should be involved in the final.
Absolutely.
Hire, now, if you look at how the ambulance, that's the one that jumps in the back of my mind right now. They had a small committee review the applicants, and then they pulled in, what, three, had a public noticed open house where all of us had the opportunity to visit with them, and ultimately, you know, the recommendation comes from that, so that everybody feels they have some skin in the game on how this process moved forward, so I agree, I have no problem with a small committee starting this process, sooner the better. Portfolio is Corey, he absolutely needs to be involved, HR. I think, let's, let's start with two Commissioners if we could, and Joetta, start this process, and then, you know, come back, and if we have to have, you know, a special meeting with a recommendation, we certainly can do that. Once we kind of have some recommendations, I'm open for other conversations and thoughts, but I think at minimum, all five have to be figured out on, and totally, totally be convinced or on board with whatever the path forward is, so.
Commissioner, if I may comment, I remember back in February, twenty-one years, I sat in front of this Board on a table, I mean, I was here, the full County Commission was there, I don't know how they vetted out my applicant before coming to that process, but there was actually, when Ken Cousy was with the city, and Rodney Ness was with Burley County, they actually sat in on the interview and asked some questions, so.
And I'm fine with that.
I agree, I, I think it'd be great to, because this Board's gonna have to work with that person, and you should be definitely part of the decision, and open meeting and ask questions and fire away and just.
Yeah, the, the challenge you have is if you do have outside interest, and that person, you know, they have to go through the mindset and, and commitment that they're making themselves available, potentially at the risk of other employers, so I respect that, but again, we're interested in what we're doing, and we need to do, do that accordingly.
So does it make some sense of like bringing in some stakeholders, county stakeholders, you know, like Jeff, I mean, he's, he's the Mayor of Bellfield.
I like that idea.
I do too.
Other stakeholders, you know.
At least in that initial process, you're saying.
Send them to job apps and let them review them.
Get together and.
Yeah, I know, I know when we did the, HR, when we did the HR thing, we created, this was a new full-time position, we had both the city HR personnel and, forget her name from Dunn County.
Desi, Desi Calhoun.
Yep, help us out, what to look for, what not to look for, so that was very, from me as a new Commissioner, that was very helpful.
You know, Bernie and I just went through that ambulance thing you had mentioned, you know, they actually had a pretty thorough process, I mean, we all sat in those meetings, scored those applications, had an opportunity to visit with those people, and it was actually split up by two committees, and in the end, we gathered up all of our scores, and we kind of came to a consensus at that point, which I thought was great, I thought it was a good, good, good process.
Okay, then, one of the things I would, are you okay with serving on that, Commissioner Franchuk?
Yes.
Commissioner White, you're okay, and Joetta, timeline, I think we need to put a timeline together, recommend a timeline as well, so I'll let you guys work on your own timing, but I would say the sooner the better, you sit down as a subcommittee, make some recommendations, we can move forward with that, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Well, do you know, right now, how many counties have, actually have an engineer instead of, as the Road Superintendent?
Well, like Burley County does, and I think Morton County does, when you get out to these smaller counties out west here, probably not, you get over to, Cass County has them, Ward County has them. McKenzie does, Montreal's got Yana up there, so.
It seems to be the new trend, whether it's right or wrong, it's something to discuss, anyway.
But, yeah.
So, does it make some sense, so you're gonna get your committee together, does it, just, I mean, just for good practice, should we notice that, those committee meetings, just in case some, yourself or myself wants to pop in?
No harm in doing it.
You know, just to make sure we're above board a hundred percent, I think, I mean.
Well, I'll, I'll put Corey in charge of this, since it's his portfolio, you make that determination, and work with Karen on.
There we go, we'll do it that way.
You know, I think the job app should get written ASAP, get a notice as soon as we can, because, like I said, I'll be here afterwards, I mean, if it comes later where I need to just be like a contract for the county with no benefits or whatever, but so, that's what we'll do.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, we appreciate the last twenty-one years.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's been a good career, and hopefully the next guy can come in and make twenty-one years and retire, because it's always everybody's goal to retire before you die.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, um, last item on the agenda, I believe, oh, oh, I'm sorry, there's another one, but let's have the discussion on the Thirty-second Street Speed Limit.
I guess I could touch on that, I had a, I had a, some folks along Thirty-second, there's some oil field businesses over there, B and B Hot Oils down there, and I think the old Pathfinder Yard down there, anyway, there's some areas where big trucks pull out onto that Thirty-second, and right now, currently, the speed limit's fifty-five, they called me with some concern. You know, they'd like to see it at least thirty-five, I think that Todd and Al have looked at this, I know Cody, Cody mentioned it as well, yeah.
Do you wanna come up?
Go ahead, Cody.
Cody Wall, Assistant Road Super, so off of Thirty-second, you get past Titan Oil Field Service, and there's one fifty-five mile an hour speed limit? Other than that, there's nothing posted, so there's nothing coming off of twenty-two or coming from the east.
So what's, what's the recommendation?
I'd say go thirty-five.
Thirty-five, all the way from one oh seven?
From, from twenty-two to pass Titan going up the hill, there's a fifty-five mile an hour sign right there.
Okay.
On the north side, we'll put a thirty-five mile an hour, and then further down, I think it's seven hundred feet, seven hundred and fifty feet, we put a reduced speed for that.
So from the highway to the top of the hill would be thirty-five?
Yep.
And go back to fifty-five?
Yep, fifty-five right up.
That's a long stretch of nothing, really, once you pass Titan.
Yep, yep, right past Titan, there's fifty-five, so I was getting fifty-five from there.
If I recall, that was thirty-five at one time, they must have been removed.
It was, yep, I don't know if there was ever a sign there, but I.
But there was, I guess, back when I was the Sheriff's Department, yeah.
Because everything west of the highway, all the way up to one twelve is thirty-five, so it would kind of fit in because of the businesses there.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Uh, one thing, before you guys do it, Cody, how far east are you talking exactly? Like, when you, if you guys take Tenth Avenue east up, you get, that's a very blind hill, and people come over that at sixty-five, let's be real, you're gonna get schmucked, especially in this weather, so how far east are you talking about?
Oh, three-quarters of a mile from one-ten. Is where the fifty-five mile an hour would start.
So, Corey, what I'm getting from this conversation is you're thinking maybe we should go to one-ten, which is over the hill, just east of of Titan, maybe half a mile?
Yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
I'll take it all the way to one-hundred and tenth, I, I looked at the map originally, and I saw, I thought that'd be the appropriate spot, I mean, it's right there at the, at crossroads there.
That would be fine.
Yeah, it's not that far, actually, we're not stretching that thirty-five mile an hour thing out that far.
Three-quarters of a mile from Titan.
Maybe that's where we should go, is when you come out of one-ten, as you're going westbound to start the speed zone there. Maybe that's where we should go, is, is when you come out of 110, as you're going westbound, to start the speed zone there, and move our 55 up to the intersection to the east. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd make that motion to, to reduce the speed on 32nd to 110th to 35 miles an hour.
From Highway 22 to 110?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, um, any other discussion?
One, only discussion, usually those bypasses are meant to quickly get around town, right? An alternative to go around, less traffic, is that gonna delay, would it be quicker to go through town than use?
No, I don't think so, because once you get down there, right when you get to the bottom of the hill, we got Titan, we got, we got all the businesses shorted up, they're pulling out with trucks all the time, and you got B and B Hot Oil Service, and there's the Hose Place, and then there's Smithies up the hill there, so there's, there's a lot of traffic on that road.
Okay. And we're gonna reduce the speed limit coming in? Quarter of a, quarter of a mile out?
It'll be actually from Highway 22 to 110, which might be a little over a mile, maybe.
Okay.
Because it's kind of offset there, but. I don't think that'll impede the traffic, because like, like Sheriff Lee says, once you come out of, off of 112, it's kind of a hill, and people are. We can change the speed all we want, not to say they're gonna drive it, but.
Yeah.
It's up to Corey to figure that out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor of changing the speed limit, uh, from Highway 22 to, uh, 110th, from 55 to 35, signified by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Does this count for motorcycles too?
I would say.
No, that's a separate speed line up there, there's some signs, separate speed, little sign.
The speed is determined by noise, so the louder you are, the more speed you can go, okay.
Right, nobody smile on their face.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, Commissioner Claris, the Weed Board truck.
Yes, thank you, uh, I think we have Travis here, Travis, if you need any information, if you'd stand by close, but, uh, during our budgeting process, for the 25 budget, we had, uh, placed, uh, $40,000 in the equipment line, um, in which that budget was approved, um, via our board at the Weed, and also by this commission, um, uh, Travis Jepsen, our department head there, they went out, so you went out and bought that truck, and then, I guess I would just leave, you can go from there, Travis, just a little background I wanted to offer.
Yep, so, um, the, we have the 40,000 budgeted for the purchase of that truck, um, total price for it was 47059. The Weed Board has a tag grant that would total $7,500, which would make up the, um, the difference there, leaving that line item with $441 in it yet. So, uh, if I could have you guys, uh, vote to authorize the accounts payable to pay for that, um, purchase? That, that's, I guess, what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Um, I'd make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
The second.
Okay, under discussion, um, I think one of the things we, we've talked about is, uh, when the various departments get new vehicles that have to be licensed, that we would like you, uh, that department go get the, the license rather than sending various authorities through, would you have a problem with that? So when the vehicle gets here, you need the license, that we need to give you authorization to run up to the DOT and get the license.
Yeah.
Your registration title.
Yeah.
It's kind of like your shining new thing, and so you get.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem, yeah. Yeah, usually it would just go through the auditor's office, but that's fine, I have no problem.
Uh, I guess, just for further discussion, so this came about yesterday, I mean, this purchase has already been vetted through our board and so on and so forth, and Travis came to me, and, and, and we had a little bit of a roadblock, with Lana was a roadblock, which I'm not saying is a bad thing, I think it's a good thing. I appreciate that, I mean, things are changed a little different than they were a year ago, a year ago. That went to a different, it was a different person handling accounts payable, and that may have just, just ended up on our February accounts payable, and really no discussion, so I appreciate the roadblock, I think it's good accountability, so, um, anyway, so.
All for accountability, any other questions, comments, discussion, hearing none, we have a motion to approve and authorize the expenditure, so the 7,500 is coming in after the fact, or?
Yeah, yeah, well, once we get this paid for, then I'll submit that to the state to reimburse.
So, uh, roll call vote, Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Last item on the agenda, just real quickly, um, like mentioned at the park board meeting, so the packet, bid packets are available and have gone out for the livestock building. What we talked about last week as part of the package was, in order to not, uh, expend money without a project, we talked about including the $7,500 bid in the, for the code review in the bid, so the successful bidder would have to go out and get the code review, and there would be $7,500 allowance in for it, so. In visiting with, uh, GT Architecture yesterday, who I received that bid from, asking how long it would take to do the code review, they're saying six to eight weeks. So my question to the rest of us is, if we are fortunate enough to get a bid that's acceptable on February 4th, and the code review takes two months, if the weather cooperates, do we want that code review, uh, completed prior, uh, to that? And in order to do that, we'd have to probably initiate that process now. So, it doesn't, uh, what it does, it put in play is if the project is not funded, uh, we have $7,500 in expense that we, that, uh, towards it, we did approve previously, planning and drawings and all this kind of stuff, and I can't remember the dollar amount, it was something like, help me out, 7,500 or 10,000, so do we want to put that money, uh, at risk and start that process, no?
So just help me out here, so tomorrow, you're meeting with City of Dickinson to do a plan review?
Next Tuesday morning.
Next Tuesday, okay.
But that's a plan review, it's not code review, so it's, it's.
But how is it gonna be different?
Well, it will be, because the, the, the city is worried about, um, planning compliance, those kind of things. They're gonna say that the code review, uh, ingress, egress, occupancy, um, uh, fire, those kind of things, um, are done in, at the recommendation of the architect and accepted, so that there is, uh, a port of liability. And, uh, so it's real easy for them, being in the enforcement division, to kind of bail and say, we want somebody else to have that liability.
I got you. They know what the rules are, they just don't want to put their stamp on it.
Well, I think what they're thinking is worst case, if you, worst case scenarios, uh, if something would happen, or it's, never, it's not an issue when everything goes fine, but when there's a problem, then that's when they have the fallback, so. I'm okay either way, uh, all I'm saying is if we wait until the project is reviewed, it will delay it, it's gonna delay it, so.
I say that we just go ahead with it.
So, would you make my, uh, motion to that effect?
To make the motion and write it up, whatever word you need for it.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. So, uh, motion is to authorize the immediate, uh, entering into the code review, um, contract with, and a budget up to 7,500. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, Commissioner, roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Another thing on the portfolios, I think last year we had an issue with the associate counties voting, there, we had officially elected somebody to that, so I.
I would like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Franchak. He's always up, it's a 6 o'clock AM meeting, so he's always up, I show up at, I, I show up at 6:30, and he is very proudly representing Stark County, so, uh, again, I'm gonna make that authorization, do we need that a motion?
I think that we do, we asked, and we had.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize or designate Commissioner Franchak as the voting delegate for NDACO.
That's second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, White. All in favor, say by, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
You really want us to say bye?
Yeah. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you.